Yet seniors involved in that emotional draw, I think that can be a good thing.
And who knows what area of interest may be triggered? I know I watched my mother-in-law. It was the Food Network. When she discovered online that there were recipes and she loved to feed people, that became the driving force as she acquired her computer skills. And it was wonderful to watch. I know some older people, it's the chance to not only get, but then share wonderful family photos.
Yeah, I think that's a great example of how the content will draw an individual in. I saw it in my father, who is a physician, and we couldn't get him to use the computer at home, but at his hospital, they had changed to computerize records. And he picked it up very quickly. When he knew he had to do it, it kicked in and he liked it.
That's really interesting, how the professional aspect will help us. And since we know there are going to be a lot more older people in the workforce, maybe that's one of the hooks we can use. We'll be right back with Dr. Gary Small, but we need to take this short break.
Need a recycling center? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall. Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
The Department of Public Works Bureau of Contract Administration keeps the city's projects on track, ensuring safety first and fairness always, from the streets all the way to the stars.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. We're talking with Dr. Gary Small, who has written a wonderful book called Surviving the Technological Alteration of the Modern Mind, or The Eye Brain. Dr. Small, seniors, I think, often are intimidated the moment you mention technology, and yet you have a technological toolkit to help seniors cope.
Yeah, I think the older generation is reluctant to pick this stuff up. It seems intimidating, it seems daunting, and so The Eye Brain has a whole technology toolkit. I mean, how do you, what kind of decision-making goes into purchasing a computer? How do you use the internet? More sophisticated approaches? How can you learn text messaging? And really get a handle on this, which I think is one approach to bridging the brain gap. But I think we also need to realize too much of a good thing is not good.
Yes, indeed. You bring up in the book the almost addictive nature of these new technologies.
It's very interesting. You know, we know that you can certainly get addicted to drugs or alcohol, and now we know food can be addiction, even sex can be an addiction. But I think the latest addiction that people are not aware of is technology. And there are people who've had real struggles with this, all ages, where email can be quite addictive, video gaming, the virtual video games, there are people who spend 12, 14 hours a day with their avatar, communicating and living in a fantasy life. Kids with their video games can be addicted. And there are actually addiction treatment centers now that are focusing their programs on technology.
Well, and there's so many, what do I want to say, markers for addictive behaviors. When you begin to cut loose jobs, friends, family, where you become pumped up with self-importance and yet your performance levels drop. And seniors might be as prone to falling into those traps as anyone.
They are. You know, it turns out there is an age effect on how much time people spend with technology. And the older you are, the less likely you are to spend time with it. But you're right in that older people can get just as addicted as younger people, and the part of the brain that is involved, this dopamine network, which is a reward trigger, it works in drug addiction and it works in technology addiction as well.
Right. And these addictive behaviors are frankly, they're all around us. I want to talk for a minute about some of the wonders that are coming. Before we started taping today, I asked you, will we be able, with implants or new kind of wiring, actually help people who have suffered memory loss or prevent it from happening?
Well, this is the part of Eye Brain I call the future brain, that wants to come. And it's quite exciting in terms of the technology development. There are now groups that have perfected the sensors, not just attached to the brain, but even to the skin, where people can actually control, can control a computer cursor or a mouse with their thoughts.
Fantastic.
And so they're beginning to type 15 words a minute. As this technology develops, I would predict that eventually we can wear a little headband that is attached by Bluetooth to your handheld device. And if you want to meet your friend for a cup of coffee, you just beam your thoughts to your little device and it goes over the internet.
Well, I love that. And you know, we have living examples. When I see Dr. Stephen Hawking, you know, the astrophysicist, look how technology has permitted him to stay engaged and continue groundbreaking work in his field.
A lot of this technology has developed from work with stroke victims and other people with neurologic disorders, and now they're taking it to the next level. And eventually, I think there will be implants. You know, you may go into the doctor and say, "Well, I'd like some Lasik to improve my vision, and can I have a hippocampal implant to help me with my memory?"
Well, I'm ready for the readouts, right here in the lenses of my glasses. I am.
You know, I think the implants are a little farther down the road, but the readouts in your glasses, I mean, that's a technology that's probably much closer.
Well, I also understand that there's a great deal of work going on with our wounded veterans coming back from war in Iraq, that the Defense Department is actually putting some resources into this field to help with, for someone who's lost a limb or maybe has some cognitive impairment because of the war.
There's certainly funding from government sources. I know there's some interest in the National Science Foundation in these new kinds of technologies. And I think we're going to see more and more investment in it because we can all benefit from it. I've been working very much on the technologies used to detect problems in the brain. And I think we can take those technologies to the next level to actually correct some of these problems.
I think you work with a lot of young people here at UCLA in the Seminole Institute. Are they excited about this field? Do they see what you've, what you have developed and how exciting this can be in the next 20 years?
There's a lot of energy around what's going on, and I think we're all sort of scratching our heads and we say, "Can this be real?" I mean, we're beginning to meet with people all over campus. I've got meetings with scientists in the Electrical Engineering Department.
Yes.
The Center on Aging recently had our first Technology and Aging Conference, where we brought together experts from industry, from healthcare, and informed consumers. And it was just a fascinating day, where people were networking, thinking about different ideas. And I think we're going to get to the next step when we bring together knowledgeable people from different areas of science.
Right. You know, we've got to talk some money here. Who, where are the major sources of funding for the research, the necessary research that you were doing, that the center is doing? Because you've got to go out there and hustle up money, right?
It's a challenge. Certainly, the government helps us considerably, as do private foundations. But it is a struggle when we have an economy like we have today, and lots of funds are going into defense, we're concerned about power and energy sources. It is a struggle to move science forward.
But see, for me, just, this is a personal observation, corporate America is going to have a tidal wave of older workers. They better get on board here. And the government is going to profit from older workers staying in the workforce and not taking out of the system, but in fact contributing. This is our future.
Well, I think we need leaders with vision. Because in general, one of the things we talk about in Eye Brain is how our brains tend to go for immediate gratification. There's a natural tendency to opt for something right now, rather than think ahead of how these new technology developments might help us in the future.
Well, and this is not rocket science. 80 million baby boomers started turning 60 a couple of years ago. They're here. They're coming. We've got to work on them. Now, before we go too much further, how can people access Eye Brain? How do they get their copy of this, so they too, like me, can better understand what we're dealing with?
They can go to local bookstores, they can go to amazon.com, barnesandnoble.com, or they can go to my website, drgarysmall.com, D R G A R Y small dot com.
D R G A R Y small dot com. Now, we have gone all this way, and I haven't mentioned your co-author, who is your wife, Gigi Vorgan. Tell me, how did that work? Were you guys just having their conversation and said, "Ooh, let's do a book?"
Yeah, I think we wrote the book to figure out how to deal with our kids. And they're very interested in it. They want to find out what's going on in their brains. And in fact, I'm going to be doing a lot of talks to parent groups, going out to the schools, and helping parents figure out how to deal with their teenagers and what all this technological revolution is all about.
Well, people who are familiar with watching Aging in L.A. know that I have a real sympathy towards intergenerational programs. It may be we have to skip over the parents, so that youngsters are connecting with seniors because they're, they can learn much from each other.
Well, I think it's a wonderful use of technologies to bring the seniors, the grandparents, and the kids together. And in fact, that's often a great way that they help each other. You know, the grandparent has the son or grandson come over and help them set up their computer, show them how to use their email.
Right.
You know, I think there are positive things. I mean, we know that hand-eye coordination, peripheral vision is improved from a lot of the technology use. In fact, one study found that surgeons who play video games actually make fewer errors in the operating room.
Wow, that's very interesting. Is it because they are really working on hand-eye coordination, or is it a part of the brain that becomes engaged?
It's probably both. And I think the next time any of us go in for elective surgery, we might interview the surgeon, ask, "Do you play World at War?"
But it may be those are the kind of the credentials we all have to include in our, well, to borrow your phrase, the toolkit that we have.
Yeah, I think we have to put this in perspective. We have to realize that the technology revolution is here, that it's affecting our brains. It's not all good and it's not all bad, but we need to adapt. We need to figure out how we can improve and actually survive the technological alteration of the modern mind.
And I think too, we have to somehow minimize the unintended consequences. If we'd been thinking a little better, for example, when women came into the workforce, we might have asked this question, "Who's going to take care of the kids?" Because what we suddenly discovered is that we have children, Blatchke kids, because both mom and dad are working. And that's the part of the technological revolution and the differences that we've kind of give some thought to, what's coming.
Yeah, we have to think about what's coming. We have the technology toolkit for people who don't know how to use the technology. But also, we have to think about being role models for our kids. I mean, there are baby boomer couples who are laptoping away in the bedroom. I mean, maybe it's a good idea to turn off the technology by 8 or 9 o'clock at night, to make a deliberate effort to have family time, for people to sit down and have conversations and interact and engage.
Well, here at the Aging and Memory Center, you also can use some volunteers, people who can come in and actually be a part of this revolution.
We're always looking for volunteers, and thanks to the National Institutes on Health, we have lots of studies going on to help us understand how the brain ages and what we can do about it. So, you know, call us at UCLA, you can find me, Dr. Gary Small, we'll be happy to find out if you can volunteer.
Okay, so it's D R Gary Small, and they'll get you.
They'll get me, or they can just come to, call up UCLA and ask for Dr. Gary Small.
Great. Thank you, thank you so much, Dr. Small, for being with us today. I'm Paul Peterson, and you've been watching Aging in L.A.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council meeting for Wednesday, September 29th, 2010. We're here in John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Right now, we are at one council member, myself, and we are waiting a quorum. It is after the hours, which under council rules, all council members should be here in council chambers, besides those who are excused today, and those are Ms. Perry and Mr. Zine, who are excused to arrive one hour late at 11:00. All other council members should be here and are expected to be here on time pursuant to the rules that govern all of our council meetings. I know we have a housing meeting that is still underway, and I've informed the Sergeant at Arms to please have all the members besides the chair be released to come down. And besides that, we are still waiting for council members Alarcon, Cardenas, Hahn, Weezer, and Corretts, Labonge, Parks, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, and Wesson. Mr. Wesson, I believe, will stay up for a couple more minutes at housing, but the rest of the Housing Committee, Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Cardenas, and Mr. Reyes, if they'll please make their way down. Thank you to Mr. Kukorian and Ms. Hahn, who are now here. That makes three of us. Again, no, I mentioned this yesterday, but council members do need to abide by their own rules. It's not a rule from the President or from any individuals. It is our own rule to be here at 10:00 a.m. for our council meetings. So please, plan accordingly to come at 9:50 or 9:55, if that brings you in at 10:00. We are, as I mentioned, here in John Farrow Council Chambers. For the members of the public who are here, thank you, and city staff who are here promptly, thank you for your punctuality. We are broadcast each of these meetings on Channel 35 throughout the city's cable system. We're also available on the internet, and of course, live and in person here and over the telephone. On the internet, if you visit la-city dot org, you can watch these meetings live with streaming video, and we archive all of our past council meetings for your convenience as well. Our agendas are made available online, and links to our city departments, important city services, and various ways to improve the quality of your life here in Los Angeles. Through telephone, you can call 213-621-CITY. It's a service called Council Phone, which allows you to listen in to the audio proceedings of the city council. If you live closer to the valley, that number is 818-904-9450. On the west side, it's 310-471-CITY. And in San Pedro, it's 310-547-CITY. We're also watchable live and in person through our city halls that are in Van Nuys in San Pedro, if that's closer to where you live. We also have the added advantage of being able to take public testimony from those chambers, if that's closer to where you live, so you don't have to waste gasoline and time coming downtown. Thank you again to those council members who are here, council members Hahn and Kukorian. We're only at three members. As I mentioned yesterday, if we fail to reach a quorum, we will adjourn for lack of a quorum shortly. Our agendas are available in the back. Those are made available 72 hours in advance for our general meetings, and 24 hours in advance for any special meeting items. Special meetings are items that come to attention after the posting of the initial agenda. And council members can also introduce motions in council meeting on an emergency basis under our Rule 23, which allows items that have come to our attention after the posting of our agendas to be introduced here, if there's a finding of that urgency as well. We also have a section of the council meeting for general public comments. Those are comments that are under the jurisdiction of the City of Los Angeles, but not on agenda items. If you do wish to speak about agenda items that are before us today, you can fill out speaker cards on that as well, hand them to the Sergeant at Arms, and we'd be happy to hear those comments. All items receive a public hearing, either in committee or the full council. And if they've already had a hearing in committee, it requires a council member to reopen them to be able to be heard here in the full council. Thank you to Mr. Smith, Cardenas, and Labonge, who are now here. We are at six members, awaiting four more members to constitute a quorum. So, council members Alarcon, Weezer, Corretts, Parks, Reyes, Rosendahl, and if you'll please make your way down. And then Mr. Wesson is going to stay up for a few more minutes, and Mr. Zine and Ms. Perry, are excused to arrive at 11:00. Thank you. Ms. Cardenas?
Mr. President, I just left the Housing Committee that's still going on. They are trying to adjourn, but just so the public understands, Councilmember Perry, Reyes, Alarcon, and Wesson were still there listening to the comments.
Correct, yeah. I announced that they were in session. I've asked the Sergeant at Arms to release everybody but the chair, so that he can continue to hear those public comments and we can begin the meeting. Thank you. Thank you for your patience while we wait a quorum. This is our last quorum call for council members Alarcon, Weezer, Corretts, Parks, Reyes, and Rosendahl. Mr. Wesson as well, we are expecting. I know he's chairing the meeting. Again, last call for council members Alarcon, Weezer, Corretts, Parks, Reyes, and Rosendahl. Mr. Zine and Ms. Perry are excused to arrive at 11:00. Thank you. There's still one person short, just before 10:15. There's only one time-sensitive matter before us today, which will be deemed approved. That happens to be in my council district, if no action is taken by this council. So, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Corretts, Mr. Parks, or Mr. Rosendahl does not arrive in the next few seconds, we will adjourn for lack of a quorum. Sergeants at Arms, I've just hearing report that there might be council members in the rotunda. If we could have somebody go look real quick. Please call the roll. Again, gentlemen, 10 o'clock, not 10:15, 10 o'clock. Make our best efforts to arrive before 10:00, so that you can be in chambers at 10:00. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Hahn, Weezer, Corretts, Kukorian, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present and a quorum president.
First order of business, please.
Approve all the minutes.
All right, Mr. Reyes moves and Mr. Parks seconds without objection. They'll be approved. Next order of business? Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Weezer moves, Mr. Alarcon seconds without objection. Those will be approved as well. If we can run through the agenda. Colleagues, if we can turn your attention to today's agenda? Okay.
Items one through five, our street lighting districts notice for public hearing. Council should continue the hearings and present the ordinances on October twentieth.
All right. If there's no objection, we'll go ahead and do that and continue until the twentieth. Next items?
Items six through eleven, our building and--
Go ahead, sir.
Items six through eleven, our building and safety liens notice for public hearing. The department reports that items six, seven, and eleven can be received and filed in as much as those liens have been paid.
Okay, let's go ahead and move to receive and file those that were suggested by the department. Any cards or items to call special from council members? Council members, this is six through eleven? If there are no cards, Mr. Clerk--
No, there are no cards.
Let's take those up. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Items twelve through twenty-six are items which public hearings have been held. On item twenty, there is a request to continue that matter to Tuesday, October fifth.
Any objection, colleagues, to continue item twenty till the fifth of next month? Seeing none, so ordered. Are there specials? Mr. Parks?
Amendment for twenty-six.
Okay.
We'd just like to add C F number oh-seven-dash-three-five-one-oh to this file, as it answers one of the questions that was in the committee report.
All right. Is there any objection to that? If not, we'll accept that as a family amendment. Different item, Mr. Cardenas, or on this-- Oh, sorry, which one?
Twenty-three special.
Twenty-three for Mr. Cardenas. Other specials, colleagues? On item twenty-one, which is in my district, let me thank the members of the community and builders who have come to an agreement on that, and we'll move that forward as well. Thank you for your hard work on that. If there are no other specials, let's go ahead and vote on the balance then. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items?
Items twenty-seven through thirty-eight, items which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration.
If there's no objection, we will consider those. All right, any cards on these items, Mr. Clerk?
There are cards on items thirty-four and thirty-five.
All right, we'll call those special for cards in the public. Any other specials, colleagues? Twenty-seven through thirty-eight? No, let's go ahead and take up the balance. Please open the roll.
Make sure they got the--
Just close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, those are approved. Next items, please.
Items thirty-nine and forty are the closed session items. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Mr. Parks? I would recommend that we can have both an open session. Thirty-nine, the procedural issues have already been resolved, and there's a global settlement that is pending, that the city attorney's recommending rejection. And also on forty, it's a routine workers' comp issue.
Okay. Mr. President, there is a card though on thirty-nine.
Call that special for card from the public then. And why don't we go through number forty then?
On item forty, the recommendation for settlement for a stipulated award in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents in the case of Rosemary Weiss versus City.
All righty. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Labange?
On item number twenty-six, is their staff still here for twenty-six?
I don't know.
They left.
You didn't say?
Ran.
They were like, gone. Right away? Anybody here from D O T? Are they here? Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. So, Mr. Labange will talk to you. We passed that, you're not asking to reconsider that, but just wanted to speak with staff. Okay? We'll make that happen. That will take us to general public comment. We can please invite the following speakers forward, starting with Dr. Clyde Williams and followed by Arnold Sachs. Be two minutes per speaker, and there is a clock to help you guide your time there. And council, please direct their attention to the podium. Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Dr. Clyde Williams, four-one-one-five-Bert Road, Elsreno, Northeast L.A. D W P, one of my favorite subjects. Why? Because I'm D W P liaison for the L A thirty-two Neighborhood Council. What happens in D W P? Well, they're going to have a rate adjustment, maybe, for water. Why? Because they didn't plan ahead too well. They thought they would get only fifteen percent reduction last year. Well, they got twenty-two percent reduction. And they want to be revenue-neutral. That is, they'll reduce the cost but increase the, or maintain the same revenue generation. Well, they didn't get it. So now, what are they doing? They're coming back and asking us for a rate adjustment. Didn't we go through this last year on the power side? So, we're quite concerned regarding the presence of the president? Hello? Hello? Anybody there? So, we're quite concerned about how--
We are listening, we just can't respond to you directly. Please go ahead.
He's straight-lin. And we're quite concerned regarding D W P's visibility, transparency, and access to information within the D W P. What happened? We don't know. Maybe we need ratepayers advocate? Well, they don't work. An inspector general? They must work, because the M T A has not appointed their inspector general, although they have an ordinance for it. So, I hope we get an inspector general soon, so that people can find out what's going on within the D W P. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, and thank you for your continued activism on that. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker. After that will be Noel Weiss.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. Glad to see that you raised the fees incrementally for the pet-- for pets. But again, as I asked yesterday, when we found out about a parking lot, a city-owned parking lot that was closed three hundred days a year. Didn't you have a brainstorming idea back in April or March to look for ways to raise revenue for the city? Must have been a very quick storm. It's amazing the amount of opportunities that come to light after the fact while the city suffers through this terrific recession that is going on. It's good to see that you're looking for political reform, I believe with Mr. Cardenas. But until you get some qualified applicants to run for positions, and my headlines of the Brown, uh, the Times, Brown versus Whitman go head-to-head, you can cite that as an example, all the reforms in the world won't work, because you're just stirring the same pot of trash. And I'm also glad to see that you're moving ahead with the ratepayer advocate for the utilities. But you're not paying attention to what all the is written in the newspapers. I believe D W P is a public utility. That makes supposedly you the ratepayer advocates for the public. So you're gonna be redundant while spending more money for nothing. The ratepayer advocates position works when the utilities are private, like PG and E or San Diego. But move ahead, put it on the ballot, the people will vote, yay, 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 and they'll be left with the same pot.
Thank you. Noel Weiss is our next speaker. After Mr. Weiss will be Monica--
Okay, Mr. Weezer, what's new in the day and night? How are you? Mark Twain, he said, "History never repeats itself, but it rhymes." And I want to make an argument why we need to elect a ratepayer advocate, a ratepayer advocate inspector general. We shouldn't really, again, repeat the mistakes of the past. Argument number one, obviously, we live in a democracy. But that so far hasn't been persuasive enough. Argument number two, voting for this office, these are the same people who elected all of you. If we, if you think that they made a mistake, then you know what? Don't have a public, a ratepayer advocate slash inspector general elected by the people. If they're good enough to elect all of you, then they're good enough to elect a ratepayer advocate. Next argument. What we're talking about is everybody said, oh, no, 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 the I B E W, they're gonna buy the election. As if to say that the I B E W won't influence the process some other way? If they're gonna influence the process, let's do it, open and above board. And the bottom line is, you gotta have more faith in the people, again, that elected you. They can discern, they know if people try to buy elections, and the fact of the matter is, a good, robust public debate will get, will get the result we deserve through that mechanism. Lastly, the appointment power of the city council, with all due respect, has not been so stellar. The last person that was appointed to the D W P board was nothing more than a glorified real estate broker. Nobody really, honestly, with all due respect, questioned them or her in any depth at all. Austin Butner, we finally got him down here, nobody ever questioned him. I'm concerned about the fact that we are gonna basically, again, rhyme history in this situation. Elect a ratepayer advocate slash inspector general. Thank you.
Monica Anger-Britson is our next speaker. After that will be Glenn Bailey in Van Nuys. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, I'm here on behalf of Born Free U S Day, and it was brought to our detention by somebody in Mr. Gary Seedy's district, that the poison Avatral is being used throughout the city to deal with problem pigeons. Avatral is a slow-acting nerve agent. It persists in the environment for up to three years, and it's completely unnecessary in addition to being cruel. The, one of my colleagues contacted the L A school district, and they were shocked to learn that Avatral is on their list of pesticides, and they do not believe it is necessary for their uses there, nor is it necessary for buildings. The city of San Francisco and New York both have banned Avatral as a poison, there's alternatives available. What I would like this council to do is put the issue of bird control and uses and pesticides on the agenda. I'd also like to meet with Mr. Gary Seedy to go over more, because with the constituent of the alternatives that are available now, and put it on the agenda item as a pot. And we do have a model ordinance that can be used to put the onus back on property owners to use the alternatives. The problem is, the alternatives are available, but too often, building managers and city managers fall back on what they used to do. They don't have an incentive to try the new, non-lethal, and humane, and environmentally sensitive ways of dealing with problem birds. And I have brought some of the information, I was hoping I can leave it with you now, that includes some of that information. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. I'll make sure my deputy comes and speaks with you as well. Thank you for being here, appreciate your comments. In Van Nuys, Glenn Bailey is our next speaker. Good morning.
Good morning, council members. My name is Glenn Bailey, and I wanted to speak about an issue that just been, was brought to my attention. And even though I serve on several advisory committees that deal with park and recreation matters, it just was brought to my attention that the police enforcement, what services provided by the Office of Public Safety, apparently is not available to San Fernando Valley during summer weekends. And that is, in fact, the, the time that we most seriously need their presence. We've been informed that there are two cars for the Office of Public Safety assigned to the valley, but that due to other demands, calls, priorities, that we don't, that we should not expect to see them during summer weekends. Although the summer is now over, and they said we'll now be seeing them more often, that really doesn't help the situation. So, since I wasn't aware of it, I don't know if council members are aware of it, and especially the five of you that have districts wholly within the valley, and the other two of you that have districts partially within the valley. We represent forty percent of the city. It seems that we need, that our parks are entitled to the same level of patrol and enforcement as all the other parks in the city. So I'm asking this matter to be looked into, and to make sure that, from, from now on, that the city, that the valley gets its fair share of city services for, from the Office of Public Safety for the, for enforcement and patrol in our city parks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Merv Evans. After that will be Walter Bechtel.
The city of Los Angeles has one unique distinction that I believe is a disgrace. There are thirty-five-hundred high-risk sex offenders, Megan-based, database sex offenders. We need to do a better job of managing those offenders and keeping them away from our children. I have submitted a copy of the Evans Child Protection Act, which I'm gonna be sending into the Department of Justice to be added as a national uniform criminal code. Two-hundred-thousand children are victims in this state, ninety-five-hundred adult women are victims in our state. That is unacceptable under any set of public policy considerations. Number two, I invite all of you to visit mervpac.net. I believe that we can do better, that we have to do better as a matter of public policy. We cannot continue to allow Los Angeles to be the child offender capital of the world. We just have to do better. And that means stronger enforcement, stronger trainings, stronger parent, teacher relationship training between our law enforcement. That also means that we need to get our childcare centers up and back and running again. I respect the fact that firefighters are out there, but I also respect the fact that a city doesn't operate on public safety alone. That we need to reopen our libraries, all of them, especially central library. We need to provide family-friendly services for our city. We can, and we will do better. Merv Evans, thank you very much. Mervpac.net, thank you.
Thank you. Walter Bechtel is our next speaker. Thank you, Mr. Evans. After that is Richard Robinson.
Good morning. I, I think I'd like to bring to attention to the city council and the people, a problem we have with enforcement. This is somewhere, what you might want to say, in the mid-Wilshire area. It happened on the fifteenth of September on the corner of, uh, uh, Wilshire and Fairfax. Two officers were called out, I'm not gonna name their names of the parties involved, but two officers were called out because of an individual who gave another individual I think we have something more for our officers to do than try to file a report or make an arrest on somebody who gives somebody the raspberries? Hello? There are people trying to actually purposefully hit people in the crosswalks with their automobiles and commit murder, and the only thing the officers up there in mid-Wilshire and other areas of the town want to do is, is fill out reports and, and attempt to, and make arrests for things that aren't crimes at all, because we've been told in the past that, by the officers, that, and I quote, "We do not make an arrest for a misdemeanor that does not happen in our presence," unquote. Why was a report filed on such a frivolous thing that isn't even a crime? So, if you want information about that, I have that here, if any of you want to talk to me about it. But I think that, in general speaking, I think the officers of our city think that law itself is a big joke, and they don't, they don't, they don't feel like that there's really anything to bother with. And if that goes to evidence on that Guatemalan case, I think it certainly is.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Richard Robinson is our next speaker. After that is Leila Adimuratovic.
One need not emphasize the name Bechtel, it's a very important person. Mr. President, members, I'm a drug-free, alcohol-free, non-smoking, non-gambling, celibate since the nineties. I'm a Christian. I was born, bred, educated, and religiously trained to be a Christian. I could no more not be a Christian than fly to the moon by flapping my arms, but that's not the end of there. At the Christian Science Church, my stepmother's church, Hollywood and La Brea, there's a charlatan, charlatan, a person pretending to be a first reader. He confronted me yesterday on the property at Hollywood and La Brea, across the street from my resident in your district, sir. Now, the only reason I'm mentioning this is because of the belittlerent manner in which he approached me. He's not only a charlatan, he's a, he's a criminal. Verbal assault is a crime, but it was the threatening physical stance which indicated that he's no longer about to be an ex-Christian scientist stealing money from Mrs. Eddie's church. But I think I should bring to Mr.-- But I think I should bring to Mr. Labange's, through the chair, sir, attention to the fact that this moron has been victimizing Mrs. Eddie's church long enough. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Robinson. Ms. Hadzimuratovic. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for taking time to hear my two issues. First of all, I would like to bring for the first time a very important issue about animals dying in L.A. Fashion District, especially in Santi Alley. I'm the president and founder of Bunny World Foundation. $250,000 later, thousand baby bunnies later, thousand, and I don't even know how many million hearts broken later, no one has ever taken this as a serious issue. We have worked with DA's office, Debbie Canaan, we have worked with City Attorney's office, who are finally prosecuting the criminals. We have assembled 250 volunteers. We have sacrificed our time, effort, money, and we are begging you to increase the fines for misdemeanor of the animals being sold in Santi Alley. They're dying there, and we end its animal cruelty, and the charge is $25. Please do something about it and grant us a meeting, put it on the agenda. I would really appreciate it. On the other hand, my colleague Monica from Born Free has actually brought to your attention the use of Avitral. I happen to be living in Silver Lake on Sunset Junction in those beautiful lofts, and there are birds dying every day, falling dead on my balcony. I've called hell department, pesticide department, every department in the world, and they're still dying, and it's unnecessary. It's a poison that's been banned in New York 10 years ago, 30 years ago in London, 10 years ago in San Francisco. Why are we not progressing? Please help us arrange a meeting, and thank you very much.
We'll take a look at that, and thank you very much for your testimony this morning. We will close public comment, and Item 23, Mr. Gardiner's had his questions answered. If we can take that on consent, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Our next item is 34, and that's called Special For Card. Stephen Voss, if you'd like to come forward on Item 34.
Good morning. Good morning, council members. My name is Stephen Voss. I'm the president of International Institute. For about 100 years, our organization has been serving primarily low-income folks throughout Los Angeles. One major way we do that is to serve senior citizens through a grant from the City Department of Aging. And as I don't need to tell you, we are all very, very appreciative in our field for the leadership the council is showing in helping us bridge this, hopefully, short, but certainly painful and temporary state budget impasse. Due to the efforts that are on the agenda today, we feel like there should be no interruption of services, at least through the end of December. We thank the Department of Aging very much for their leadership in helping us move forward. We thank you very much for that. And we remind you that we're all in a very important and good cause, and that is, due to the state's budget impasse, there are many, many, many thousands of vulnerable seniors who are otherwise going to be unable to have an important and sometimes only meal of the day. So again, we thank you for that, and we hope that you will adopt Measure 34 today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Voss. Appreciate your testimony. If we can please open the roll on Item 34, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. We'll send that forth with without objection. Item 35 is next, called Special For Card from Mr. Sax. You want to speak on that, and Item 39, Mr. Sax, we'll give you...
Yeah, we did it. Thanks.
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Sax. Item 35, resuming city council meetings at Van Nuys. Is that a good idea? And the reason that you, I guess you canceled them was because of the budget constraints. So I think it's just as important that you're resuming the meetings, that the public become aware of what it costs to put on the meetings. Every day that you have a meeting here, you always start the meetings, Mr. President, by running through a litany of an agenda, and then you stop and say pursuant to council rules. Well, while we wait pursuant to council rules, the cost meter to operate the city and the city council, that wheel's turning. So the same thing will occur in Van Nuys. And again, as I say, the reason you canceled the meetings was because of budget constraints. So I think the public should have an opportunity to know that when people are late, this is what it costs the city in operations. Because if you have the money to burn, and you're so interested in feeling the public's pain in this recession, then have a little bit of courtesy and concern and show up at 10 o'clock. Because, again, you canceled the meetings in Van Nuys for budgetary reasons, you're starting them again because the people deserve the representation. So if they deserve the representation, and the meetings are starting at 10 o'clock, then they deserve representation at 10 o'clock, not at 10:15. Thank you.
Thank you. Sit tight right there, because we're going to get on 39 real quick. If you just want to wait, let's take a vote on 35 and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That's approved. Number 39, Mr. Sax.
Thank you again, regarding the settlement versus the Brown Act. And again, as for clarification, what are the rules of the Brown Act? And what are the rules of the Brown Act as they pertain to the city council and its meetings? And its meetings in a chamber? There are times when council members go in the back room, they're considered part of the council. There are times when members go in the back room, and they're not considered part of the council. You ask for rules of the quorum on this side of the podium. All we ask for here as speakers is the same kind of somewhat level playing field regarding rules. The Brown Act states you need to have a quorum. The Brown Act states that without a quorum, the meeting can't be held. And again, I go back to the 10:15 rule. Who suffers from your lack of showing up? That's on the public. Because people don't get to speak, people who come in here to speak on items, not necessarily for public comment, don't get a chance, they have to return. If you're so concerned, and you're so ethical, and there's a difference, you may be very ethical, but you're very immoral, and the difference is vast. So again, Brown Act violation. You have a set of rules for your council, enforce the rules. What are the penalties for coming late, Mr. President? You always mention them. How about you're late more than half the meetings in a quarter, then you lose time on your opportunity to comment on items in session? That would be a fair...
Thank you, and thank you for the suggestion, Mr. Sax. With that, let's go ahead and walk through the settlement.
Mr. President, on Item 39, the recommendation is to reject the settlement offer in the case of South Central Farmers Action Fund versus City.
All right. There's no objection to that. Let's open the roll on the recommendation, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, that is rejected. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, on Item 35, there actually was a second card submitted from Van Nuys that wasn't considered. Do you wish to go back and reconsider that?
Sure, we'll reconsider that for that card. We'll open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And that card is from Glenn Bailey. Mr. Bailey, you are on. Thank you. Hold on one second. There you are. Now you're on. Go ahead.
All right, thank you, President Garcetti. I don't take the oversight personally. I wanted to comment with regards to city council meeting at Van Nuys City Hall. First of all, to remind most of the council members that on March 10th, 2006, a joint committee report, the Rules in Elections and Budget and Finance Committee Report, included, and I quote, "to approve the council meeting there," meaning Van Nuys City Hall, "on the first Friday of the month." That was action voted on by the full city council. This action, number 35, would move it from every month to every other month. The San Fernando Valley represents 40 percent of the population, the tax base, and the vitality of this city. I think we deserve something closer to 40 percent, but certainly not just one, six meetings a year out in the valley. Also, last I heard, the council rules require 15 meetings be held outside of City Hall after June 30th, within a two-year period. I haven't been keeping count, but how's that going for you? Because I'm not aware that you're doing very well for those 15 meetings since June 30th. The fact is that I think it would be a lot less expensive to meet in Van Nuys, because you don't have all the bureaucrats coming from the high levels of the City Hall buildings spending the day down at city council meetings. I think that if you only put items on the agenda that dealt with the valley, and only had the people come out who had to actually deal with those items, that you would actually save money rather than costing money. So I think this argument with regards to the budget and the city's financial situation, you could actually use this as an opportunity to save money, and I would encourage you actually to look into that. But most importantly, at least go back to the monthly meetings, as was the adopted policy of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. And just briefly, on a couple of items, we're very excited to come back to the valley. There was an item between the suggestion that the council had passed for monthly meetings to get rid of those meetings in the difficult budget times that actually had been initiated by some council members from the valley, given the tough times. This returns us to going from zero to six, and to be able to pass that. We also have COG meetings, which is Council of Governments, that are going to be meeting regularly in the San Fernando Valley at Van Nuys City Hall. And in terms of whether we can make everything about the valley, we'll meet in the valley. We've tried that in the past, to do that either for districts or valleys. The volume of business that we do from around the city that is necessary three days a week makes that a little bit difficult, but we do always try to front-load or back-load as much valley business on those Fridays we meet in the valley. So we're very much looking forward to being back in the San Fernando Valley, and I appreciate personally your suggestions as well. With that, let's go ahead and revote on Item 35. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting interfeor.
Does it post it and refer it?
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Han requests to be excused to arrive at 11:00 a.m. on October 5th for city business. That meets council policy.
She is excused.
Councilmember Corretts requests to be excused to leave at 12:30 on October 1st for city business. That meets council policy.
He is excused.
Councilmember Wezar requests to be excused to arrive at 10:30 on October 12th for city business. That meets council policy.
All right, he is excused as well.
And Councilmember Parks requests to be excused October 15th and 19th, and to arrive at 11:30 on November 23rd. All for city business, and all meet council policy.
Okay, he is excused.
That clears the desk.
Any announcements, colleagues? Do we have any announcements? Mr. Labange.
Just want to let you know it's the last day of September. That means there's three months left in the year. As we continue to do our work here, and as the new fall season has arrived, I wanted to make note, because sometimes the year goes by so fast, there's only three months left in this year. I wanted to announce that.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. It is the last day of September. We'll be meeting tomorrow. Ms. Han.
Yes, I want to make an announcement that it's come to my attention...
Following that will be the first day of October?
It's come to my attention that our rest stops for our truck drivers have been closed in the state of California, and I have personally put a call in this morning to the director of Caltrans. I'm bringing forth tomorrow maybe a resolution that we call on the state of California to immediately reopen those truck stops. That's dangerous, it's immoral, it's unethical. These are the places where our trucks pull off on the side of the road, use a restaurant, get water. That's my announcement, that I'm calling the director of Caltrans, and if you guys like to do it too, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, an announcement, in the bicycle world, which we all should be in, we're having a hearing tonight in West LA at the Felicia Mayhood Center. From 5:00 to 6:00, there'll be booths and information. 6:00 o'clock, the public hearing will start. So I urge people who are interested in bike lanes and bike paths and sharrows, and all the aspects of moving in the right direction on cycling, should come to this meeting at the Felicia Mayhood Center at 5:00. Program after that starts at 6:00. I'll be there at 6:00 o'clock. I look forward to seeing you tonight at the Felicia Mayhood Center in West LA.
Any other announcements, Mr. Parks? No other announcements? Do we have any adjourning motions, colleagues? I can please ask everybody to rise for our adjourning motions. The other announcement, of course, is that we will be in the valley on Friday, October 1st, back in Van Nuys City Council Chambers, so we look forward to seeing folks in the Van Nuys City Council Chambers this Friday.
We're going to the valley?
Ms. Han.
Thank you, colleagues. I'd like us to adjourn today in the memory of Michael John Betonio, who passed away, he was only 45, passed away in San Pedro after suffering a major heart attack. Michael is the son of Al Betonio, a longtime volunteer of our San Pedro Historical Society. Michael was born on December 4th, 1964, to Al and Maggie Betonio in Harbor City, and as a young adult, he moved to Colorado, but then returned to San Pedro 23 years ago with his bride Debbie. They have three children, Katie, Joel, and Lucas. He had a career in the carpet business, and his hobbies were in the martial arts. Our sympathies to the entire Betonio family. Services have already been held.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Mr. Parks?
Mr. President, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of George Kawamoto, who passed away Wednesday, September 22nd, in Torrance, due to complications from lung surgery. George was a city employee from 1957 until 1959, when the city's health department was transferred to the county. He then retired from the county in '94 after 37 years of dedicated public service as a health inspector. George is the cousin of Len O'Zawa, who is our former assistant CLA and budget expert. George is survived by a loving family, his wife Frances, son and daughter-in-law, and a variety of other family members. Funeral service was held yesterday evening, September 28th, at Gardena Buddhist Church on 166th Street. Also, colleagues, it doesn't seem like this long ago, but today is the 12-year anniversary of the death of Tom Bradley, our former mayor. He was born in 1917, passed away in 1998, served as five-term mayor from 1973 to '93, but it's something that time has passed significantly, and certainly his legacy lives on from the airport to downtown skyline to a number of issues that he addressed. And in fact, most recently, it became evident during the most recent presidential election that they had a great discussion about the Bradley effect that came about from his run for governor. And so also, one of his major accomplishments was the 1984 Olympics in LA. So just like to honor our former mayor on the 12th anniversary of him passing.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Labange?
I think that's wonderful that we do remember Mr. Parks, that we do, Mr. Parks, remember Mr. Bradley every year. This morning, I had an opportunity to take two people up to the Tom Bradley Tower here in City Hall, so it's very great to remember those who went before us. Tragically, someone who lost their life is this Monday in a morning hike on the hottest day of the year. Sally Menke and a friend started walking up Brush Canyon, which is up near the Beechwood Park of Griffith Park. In high heat, they separated, and she continued to walk. She did call, made a call to her husband, and told that she was a little delirious because of the heat, and tried to make her way out of the park. Unfortunately, she did not make it. She was found not far from homes in the Las Feliz Oaks area, off a trail of a western canyon. But she was much loved by her family, survived by her daughter Isabella and her son Lucas, her husband also, Dean Parasot. All tragic, this woman who loved hiking Griffith Park, but she also was loved, not just by her family, but people in the profession. She was a filmmaker, she was a film editor, and as you know, just like sometimes, some people have this continual partner in making films, Quentin Tarantino's film editor, she was. So I ask for adjourned memory of Sally Menke, who was 57 years old, a much-loved woman who tragically lost her life this last Monday.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll? As a reminder, we'll be next in session...